Good afternoon. It's just at the four o'clock on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting of the Bay County Board of Commissioners for order. Could you please take the roll call? Madam Clerk.
Fox. Krieger.
Yes.
Begic.
Here.
Coonan.
Here.
Radke.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Herrick.
Here. Motion to excuse Commissioner Fox, please.
Motion to excuse Commissioner Fox.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next will be the invocation, please, followed by the pledge.
Lord, we ask that you bless this session of the Board of Commissioners this day in that you lead and guide this Board in the decisions made so that all citizens in this community will benefit. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic of this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next will be the amendments from 2A22 and 21522. It's your pleasure.
To approve both of them?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, motion carries. Next is citizen input. Anyone from the audience that would like to speak, please step to podium. Please state your name, write it down on the pad, and away we go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Richard Byrne, Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, Mr. Executive and Staff, Madam Clerk, and Assistant, Mrs. Berger. I'm here requesting a reappointment to the Bay Area Behavioral Board and Directors. I consider it an honor and a privilege to serve you and the community in that capacity. Thanks for your consideration.
I'm also under consideration for the Bay Area Behavioral Health Board. Spent my over 20-year career learning the behavioral health system, which is a complex system, and hope to use that knowledge base that now that I've retired from that position at Do-All. Also, I'm just very passionate about the individuals in our community that are underserved, and this Board does that. So I hope for your consideration of me on that Board. Thank you.
Anyone else? Step forward, man. Both men, one at a time. Go ahead. We're good. Come forward.
And I didn't know we were supposed to sign in. Sorry. Hi, I'm Kristi Grochey. I'm with Advisor Care. I'm the executive director, one of the executive directors with Advisor Care. We are here to talk, to bring awareness to the auto reform that happened this past July. We are going around and meeting with different counties to ask them to develop a resolution. We actually have between 10 and 15 other counties that have already adopted a resolution for us that are submitting to the governors, and we just wanted to let you know that we are for the change that has happened. What we do feel that's happened is home care was overlooked or added on at the end and missed, actually. So there's a lot of clients that depend on home care workers to come in to their home to, for them to survive. They have to use Hoyer's, they have Trakes, they're quadriplegics, and what has happened is typically we billed the insurance companies about $30 an hour, between $28 and $30 an hour between the level of care that they needed, and those rates were caught by 55%. So now we're being reimbursed between $14 and $18 an hour from the insurance companies, which is what we pay our caregivers. So a lot of home care agencies have closed their doors that accept the auto cases, and there's actually a house bill by Representative Green, 5698, that is bringing a solution to this that we are for, we're in support for. So we actually are just going around to the different meetings to have each of you bring awareness to the changes that have happened if you weren't aware. We have constituents that are in this county. We service all of Michigan, but we do have constituents specifically in this county that we need to provide care for. And so I do want to reiterate, we are looking for you to adopt a resolution that, and we already have some that have been happened, but we are not looking to roll back what the change was. We are for the change. A lot of people are thinking like that $400 check that they're supposed to get, that money has already been allocated. We already know that. We're not looking to have any change to that. What we're looking for is just a solution for the, what we're being reimbursed for home care agencies, for caregivers to go into someone's home that they depend on to survive and to live for their activities. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm not going to take a pen. All still pens.
Next, please. It's all right.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Parnacki. I'm in Beaver Township. I'm a retiree who has been volunteering with animal services, and I did speak with the Ways and Means Committee back in February regarding the need for additional staffing at the center. And since that time, I came across on the website a study that was done in 2017. You can find that study right on the website. They had a number of recommendations, and today I'd like to just address one of those, if you wouldn't mind. And I'm sorry, I only have copies. My printer ran out of ink, so I have limited copies. I'd like to start out by referencing that the mission of animal services and adoption right on the website, one of the missions is adherence to best practices for the care and rehoming of animals. Talking about care, the study recommends the addition of a part-time vet tech position. I have seen the need for that myself, volunteering there. You notice that in that recommendation, they talk about any caregiver should be under the direction of trained medical personnel. And although we do employ a vet, he comes once a month. And yes, the center can take animals to him, but that is timely also. I mean, you're already short on staff. So now to transport an animal there may be avoidable if it's a more simple medical issue. So this issue of best practices ties right into rehoming. If you're not providing the optimal care for the animal, it becomes stressed, it becomes unadaptable, and that's the ugly reality of it, that there are animals that become unadaptable and are euthanized. So the standards for care since that study five years ago have developed three, four, five-fold. And I'll be sending to you, I didn't want to do that today to overwhelm you, but a couple of documents that are the recent, most recent studies done about standards for care. And you will see that our facility itself falls short of that standard, and also we need more trained care ongoing there, which affects the rehoming. And I know when you hear facilities, you think, ah, money, you know? So it could be something possibly for a millage also. But this issue of the vet tech, I think, is critical, and I would like you to look at ways to fund this and reach our goal of the best practices for care, which will increase our rehoming. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please step forward.
Hi, I'm Julie Wagner with Advisor Care Home Healthcare as well, and I just wanted to come up and say, and most of you have probably gotten an email from Brian Harrison. He is magnificent, magnificent person to speak. However, he couldn't be here today. So what I wanted to bring to your attention is I get the privilege to talk to these families and the patients that need our help. Typically, it's a privilege. Now, I'm in tears because they're calling me crying because there's no one to help them. We can't keep taking on clients we're not getting paid for. I'm also doing collections for them, and the insurance company in the beginning, it said they will negotiate with you. We have a client I've tried to negotiate, they said, nope, you're getting $17.18. This man can't bathe himself, dress himself, eat himself, use any of the bathroom himself. He can't even turn himself. But we have to pay our caregivers up to $18 an hour. So we're losing money. So we're asking, again, for you to adopt a resolution. One client, I will say that we did not bring on, that really tore at my heartstrings, sorry. He had called, he's a quadriplegic, the company that was with him, on July 2nd. Over 43 companies either closed or stopped taking auto. So that morning, they got him up in his chair, they moved a microwave and a mini-fridge close to him, gave him a spatula to open it, and they left. And he needs care. Where's he going to get that care? I've asked the adjusters, where are you going to send them? To a nursing home? No, half of our clients would, they'd run over everybody at the nursing home with their, you know, wheelchairs, but they would not survive. They would not do good. There have been seven deaths in Michigan already because of the lack of care. So if you have any questions, you know, please ask. We're here to advocate, again, not for, not to repeal the whole thing, but something's got to change, or your clients in Bay County are going to suffer, and we have suffered. If we have to discharge them, there is no one else. I've looked, I've tried, and there is no other company willing to take them. So I'll sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no one come forward, first thing I need, I could accept a motion to do a late addition to the agenda, Resolution Number 2022-65. We'll place that at Section 7, Section 8C3, and that's Ryan Gale's appointment to the 911. So do you want to add that?
Show move.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And the other thing would be to, since Commissioner Fox is in transit somewhere, and not here, obviously, to refer Section 7C to next week's full board meeting and allow the full Board to vote. And that would be on the invocation for the Behavioral Health Appointment Board appointments. So anyway, so if you want to refer to next week, when we have a full Board, after, it would be after the personnel meeting, now would be the time to do it.
Show move.
Support.
Any discussion?
Why are we doing that?
Because we'll have a full Board at next week's meeting.
There's no guarantee there will be a full Board next Tuesday.
But that's your mess. We'll have a full Board. You'll be here, but that's the point. We're going to move it to next week's meeting. Commissioner Krieger.
I know that behavioral health is going to need who would be appointed because there will be election of officers before this meeting that you're talking about.
Next week?
Yep.
Is it like next Monday?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, the election of officers is scheduled for next Monday. Not knowing going into it will create an issue for behavioral health.
Anyone else? All in favor?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Johnson.
Yes.
Krieger.
No.
Begic.
Yes.
Coonan.
No.
Radke.
Yes.
Herrick.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Refer to next week. Next on the agenda, the Auburn City Manager, please step forward. Thank you.
So I'm Dave Hague from the City of Auburn. I'm the city administrator. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to be here, Commissioners, Mr. Executive, Department Heads and Staff. So the City of Auburn, and what I'll do is, you have a condensed version handed out to you, but I'll go through presentation here more at a 30,000-foot level, and then we'll condense down to the numbers as we get near the end of it. It starts off with the City of Auburn requesting ARPA funding from the county for assistance with lift station number 15 and detention basin, which, when we talk about lift station number 15, that's it, from the surface, a lot underground, but when I say number 15, we are not, we don't own 15 of them. Bay County, their Department of Water and Sewer are the ones who manage it for us, take care of it, and help us. So number 15 must mean it's number 15 of theirs that they keep track of. So we have one, and that's important to understand as we move forward. Because the City of Auburn is proposing a partnership with Bay County to rehabilitate and upgrade the Auburn wastewater infrastructure, specifically that lift station, mechanical and structural components. We also propose upgrading and increasing the reliability of our current wastewater system and diminish what we call INI. I'll get into that in a moment. And have a system that's reliable. And the reason I say that is, is very shortly here, we'll look at the age of the infrastructure. When we look at this, I just want to share with you, sometimes people don't realize what's all involved. City of Auburn is not a large city. Bay City certainly has more underground, but when you have that water come out of the tap, you have to realize there's normally at minimum three pipes underground. One is to supply that water to you, should not coexist or touch any of the other pipes or water that come in. The next pipe that comes into a house is wastewater. That's where your sanitary water goes out. And then there's a third pipe under their storm. None of those should mix. And I say the word should. That's going to be where we'll get into the INI. But looking at the next one, of which you would have in your condensed version, this gives you a little idea of the age of the infrastructure. We're talking 1965, 1981, 1999, for the most part. And then if you look down at the last, on the flow meter, just to simplify that, that was done in 2013, and already it's corroded to the point that we have to replace it. Just that little flow meter is a $7,500 price tag. There's a reason for the flow meter, which I'll cover in a little bit, as to how that ties in with the Department of Water and Sewer through Bay County. This, just letting you know, you know, Auburn does exist in the heart, in the middle of it all. That's important because when we do the Ask for Auburn, we are asking for ourselves, but many are affected by our activities, and I will share that as well. We do partner with Bay County, with you, hopefully in the ARPA, Bay County Department of Water and Sewer, who manages our sanitation, the City of Auburn DPW Department, which takes care as much as we can under their direction, Auburn City Commission, City of Auburn DDA, Monitor Township, Michigan Environment of Great Lakes and Energy, Eagle, as referred to, Consumers Energy, and another one would be also Midland Water, which is our water supply. So the plan includes the repair and upgrades of the current systems, sanitary wastewater management, infiltration, inflotration and infiltration, home flood crisis mitigation, and the installation of safety and equipments. When I mention the inflow and infiltration, they call it INI in the industry, and I should have started with this, I am not an engineer, but I will, I do get involved in enough to make me dangerous on understanding some of these things. But if you recall, I mentioned how the three pipes should not mix. Well, years back, when the systems were first established, particularly in Auburn, the way you handled your wastewater was dilution was the solution. So you allowed all the families to pump in their stormwater into the wastewater. In addition to that, through age of infrastructure, you start creating leaks and things like that. So really, with a rain event, you shouldn't have any effect on your sanitary sewer system. Should be the same flow. That's in a real world. I should say that's in a perceived world. The real world is, is you do have a change in flow. During the last few years, we've had some major rain events. The volume of water that comes to that single lift station, it gets faster flow than it should be. So now I'll get into what happens, and it's because of this INI, in addition to just needing pumps taken care of. The next slide also shows what's happening on the stormwater level. So this is right across from the entrance of Aaron Manor. Pet Palace is there, O's isn't too far from this. The street was flooded this past year for quite some time. It actually bubbled up from the drains. Economic impact to residents, if you read through it, it'll talk about that, basically, the average cost for property damage caused by flooding is around $39,000. Doesn't take a foot of water to create that. It's an expensive proposition. And I know all of us, Bay County and other counties, have been dealing with flooding, but one of the things we want to make sure is, is that we don't enhance that flooding situation. And that's what's critical about this Ask. For the lift station itself, we've been asked by Bay County Department of Water and Sewer to help us out with safety guardrail. They actually go down, if you look between the two, the four yellow barrels in the middle, that's the hole they go down into what they call the wet well. It's right next to the road. And so they aren't feeling real safe about that. They'd actually like to create a guardrail system and actually a, for lack of better phraseology, a tunnel-type system to move it back a little bit so they're not so exposed. Our other one, which is not in the picture, is, you can see in the red circle, there's another one right there in the road that they actually have to get into at times also. The mechanical system is old, again, back to 1965, 1981. So the detention basin and how that ties in. What you have is during a major rain event, because of that INI, the water flow has become too much. We have a situation where Bay County Department of Water and Sewer is keeping track of what the amount is that we're sending to them. They start getting backed up because Monitor Township also gets affected. There's a choke point at Monitor Township. All flows downstream, so they have us dial back the amount we send. So we can only send 1,000 gallons per minute. So what happens to the rest of it? Right now, two choices. One is it goes in people's basements. Number two is we pump it out to our detention basin. So that's where this comes in. So it gets diverted, sent out to a detention basin. Auburn owns about 76 acres north of the City of Auburn out in Williams Township. And with that, we redirect the flow. We redirect as much flow as we can. We dial it back so we don't overtax the system for Bay County and for Monitor Township. Once they get the green light that the flows are back to normal, then that flow that went to the detention basin gets pumped back to that lift station. Then, from the lift station, it goes back to Bay County. So I share that because our Ask of 769-720, our numbers that were worked up, working with Bay County, helping us out and understanding this, when you do that type of pumping and sharing it and putting it out there and then bringing it back, if you can look, and you would have this in your summary as well, these numbers do exist. It talks about Pump 2, Pump 3, Pump 1. Pump number 3 is actually the main pump that pumps it to Bay County. When that flow becomes too great, Pump number 1 assists it. When it still becomes too great, then what happens is, excuse me, Pump number 2 assists it, then Pump number 1 diverts it out to the catch basin. One of the reasons this is so important, all of those pumps are from around 1965. If we have pump failure, homes are going to get backed up in Auburn. If we can't divert it, we only have one pump to divert it out to the catch basin, if we can't do that, we put too much to Bay County's system. Any way you look at it, it's a no-win situation. We're not asking to make improvements, just make sure we don't have the pump failures. Times have changed that with these improvements come new flow meter, new electrical equipment. What the flow meter does is tells Bay County how much we're sending them on our end, and it helps them monitor it to say, and they can automatically do it with newer equipment that we're proposing, to divert out to the basin, when to bring it back. Out to the catch basin itself, when I, that one little building that looked like an outhouse is a pump station. That doesn't even have power to it. So when you look at this next slide, up at the top, it says new pump station power supply. We're proposing to get us power out to the pump station. Right now, we take a generator out there to the catch basin and have for years, but they would like to see more reliability. Bay County is asking us to do that. In addition to that, we've got a situation where, because of the Eagle requirements, there's that catch basin out there. They would like to have that surrounded with chain link fence. There's a number of issues there. We only have one pump. It's been, again, very old. They'd like to have a second pump put out there so that they can be reliable. So with this, I will start with this. To be fully transparent, City of Auburn did receive some ARPA money. We've been pledged to hold $218,000. It's not going to go very far because we're trying to do what we can on our end, and right now we have on the table some, what we call, infrastructure financing, where we're working on securing approximately $5.4 million through the USDA to improve some of these same situations within the city itself, which this pump station is not part of it. So I share that to let you know, we are investing our money as well, and so our $218,000 unfortunately isn't even going to cover the engineering costs of the USDA financing, not even come close. And that can't be wrapped up into some of the other financing that we have going on. So that is why we're coming to you, because it does affect us here at the city. It affects Monitor Township, Bay County, Bay County's wastewater treatment system. And to keep costs down, I did want to share this as well, Bay County Department of Water and Sewer has the ability to do the majority of the work. So if we were to receive those funds, they're going to turn right around and go back to Bay County Department of Water and Sewer for doing the work for us. We know they do great work. We can do it without near the engineering costs for the type of things that they do. They know what we need. They've been taking care of it and maintaining it for us, and so we just view it as a win-win. So with that- So with that, I'm open for questions.
Commissioner Krieger.
Thank you. So we had some rain events last year.
Pardon?
We had some rain events last year. Did we have any pump failures at that time?
We actually did, and they came right out right away and got us up and running. So we did have that. We also had, not last year, but there was a rain event about, I want to say, time flies, 18 months ago, two years ago, I think it was in the fall. Some of the diversion equipment wasn't working to divert that. So then it was a manual thing, get out there and hurry up, flip some switches, things along that line. And Bay County said, you know, we need to upgrade this, improve it, get it. So because of, again, we're backing up basements, and at the same time, we're taxing Bay County's system by sending it until you can divert that flow down. And so when we look at the three pumps, one pump is an auxiliary pump. It's designed that it gets used when normal flow is out there. So that's what the little pump does, just takes care of the maintenance, if you will. But anytime you have any event, the other two pumps are necessary. And that first maintenance pump, it wouldn't cut it. So when you look at duplication of effort and having a little bit to support, we just don't have it. We have pumps to do a specific job, and there is no dual system.
So this pumping station that doesn't have power, that would, if you get power out to it and not have to use a generator, does that give you a fourth station or is that one of the three?
That would not give us a fourth station. That is located north of town. So when we take the pump station that's in town, shoots it out three miles north to that basin out there. And that's where that pump station is that doesn't have power. And that just simply is needed to divert the flow back to the city so then we can turn around and send it to Bay County. So temporary storage of waste, if you will.
On your breakout of the cost, to run electrical to that pumping station, what line would that be on or where's that at?
That would be, it's lumped into, on your summary one.
Under electrical?
If you get down to section B, new pump station power supply, that's where that 45,000 is.
Wow.
Because we've never had power there. So consumers would have to run it back. And when you look at pumps, and now we're getting above my pay grade, there's different phases of power. They were talking to me, not just 220, but 440 power, so you're in a hole.
So would that be a candidate for possible solar or it's more than what it could handle?
Yeah, it'd be more than it can handle.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You know, and that's a great question because, and I think Vaughn can attest to it by attending some of our meetings, the approach is a common sense approach normally to things. And if there's a better way or a more fiscally responsible way to do it, we're normally, unless it's just that something we didn't think of, we're attempting to keep those costs down all the time. So, no, we've tried to figure out if there were other ways to do it.
Okay.
Yep.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes, I've been at your meetings, and I've also been there when the people come in and they have water in their basement.
Yes, you were.
A lot of people do not like to have water in their basement. So having had water in my basement before is no fun. So I know it's been an issue for quite a while now, and I support your efforts to get it fixed. Also, Monitor, I know Monitor has some problems with the stormwater leaking into their sanitary sewer system, which you mentioned causes the backup downstream from your area then too.
Yep. And I want to make it very clear, this is not going to eliminate the whole situation. Our USDA financing of what we're trying to do there will help reduce flooding that potentially could happen. These are just to make sure it doesn't happen because of failure of the existing system. So we still have to divert, unfortunately, and this is not anything that the public would want to hear, but at times, at least if we can get the sanitary out there, if your basement flooded, hopefully it's clear water, not sanitary water. Yeah, sewer water.
Mr. Barsh first.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. I think you're doing a good job, but I would like to clarify a few things.
Sure.
The Bay County Road Commission has no county employees added. When you refer to the county, I think the perception is that it's us, that's the county government. The reason it's named Bay County Road Commission is because that's where it's located, but they get no budget from us. And they will be entitled to, I would think, a fairly massive amount of infrastructure money. Have you approached Jim Lillo or the three county road commissioners that run the Bay County Road Commission? They're not connected to the county government. But I know they don't have to be for you to be considered for ARC, but ARC was primarily targeted toward COVID. And as you know, or I assume you would know, that President Biden signed recently the infrastructure package, which I believe $10 billion is coming to Michigan for roads, bridges, and infrastructure. Just wondering if you have any, do you understand that's the road commission, not us?
So when I reference county in terms of helping us, I'm talking about the Department of Water and Sewer.
Which is the road commission.
Which is the road commission.
Yes.
Yeah. So with that, we've had discussion with the Department of Water and Sewer, and this is where we're at. We have not had them indicate to us that there would be any funding available above and beyond, other than the, what they've provided to us in terms of keeping costs down for maintenance. So I don't know if that clarifies to some degree.
I know we've all been asked to support a request for 26 million to repave State Park Drive through the road commission, but I really, it would be helpful if they would seek some infrastructure money. We're limited to 10 million per year for two years. And we have been asked, the commission, I don't have a role in it or a vote on it, but substantial, you know, amounts of money going to water and sewer and things that, you know, I'm a little sensitive because the Bay Area Water Authority, in my opinion, has been an unmitigated disaster. The way it's run with the townships and the cities overseeing it, continually blaming the county for the rates that they voluntarily increase and keep the money. They supplement their budgets with water rate increases, the 13 townships who own the Bay Area Water Authority. So just wanted to clarify that for the audience, as well as members of the public, that, you know, and I'm sensitive to your need. But again, it's something that may be more appropriately funded through infrastructure than COVID funding, but it's up to the board, I guess.
Commissioner Coonan.
Oh, thank you. I was going to just expand on what Jim said. I think we need to have work done. I don't think ARPA dollars are the best way to fund it. I come from the city. A couple of commissioners represent the city of Bay City. And about 20 years ago, I think the DEQ required them to invest 40 or 50 million dollars to upgrade their wastewater treatment plant. That was born solely by the ratepayers. When you talk to people, they say Bay City's water rates are enormous. It's not the water rates, it's sewer rates, because they were required to invest 40 or 50 million dollars, which those bonds are going to be paid off, I think.
Next year.
Next year. So the folks in Bay City should see a reduction in their utility bills. I think it's great, but we've had two other requests, one from Bangor, one from Monitor as well. These ARPA dollars, in my view, should be used for kids, for those folks that have, kids that are at risk, small businesses or other entities that have suffered greatly through this pandemic. And I don't know exactly where we are at, being that we're discussing this. I know we got 20 million dollars. We put aside 9 million for hopefully a project for mental health and the health, because that's our role, primary role as county executives and county commissioners and even as county executives is public health. But maybe at some point in the next meeting, we can get where we're at with what we've allocated and put all this together so we can see the entire plan of all those folks that have presented to us and how much money is left so that we can sit down as a board, make some logical decisions on where we're going to invest those dollars. The city of Bay City's done a fabulous job. They've got committees that sit and they each take a certain area and they've allocated dollars. Maybe we can do something similar to that and with the rest of the remaining dollars that we have. So we all are on the same page as to how much money is there and where that money would go to best be invested for whatever this board decides that should be invested, whether it's childcare, whether it's education, whether it's at-risk families. So I think if I were you, I'd get the job done because, yeah, you know, because there's no one more on rate than somebody who's got water in their basement. And if it's, obviously, it's well-known, we must be discussing this forever, but at some point, the people within that area need to be responsible for the upgrades to whatever project needs to be taken care of. Nobody helped the city of Bay City, and we've been paying for that for 20 years. So whether, and like Jim said, with this infrastructure money, that should be available. It sounds like you've got a plan, just like we did with broadband. You put a plan together so when that money comes, we're ready to spend it, not say, oh, I think we need to have this. So it sounds as though you've got a plan, so when those dollars become available, they are ready for you to take and make the investment. But if this needs to be done, I'd get this done as soon as we could. Obviously, those infrastructure dollars would be there for other projects that you, I think mentioned that this is just the beginning. You've got other problems there as well. 1965, that's a long time ago. And, you know, how do we, look at the roads in Bay City. Right, I'll tell you, those are brutal, at least where I live. And, you know, you have to reinvest. Nobody wants to pay any taxes, but sometimes you've got to pay taxes in order to upgrade things to survive. So I wish you the best, but I don't think these projects are what ARPA was intended for.
Anyone else? Single. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your input.
Dave, very good presentation. Thank you.
Next, Mr. Amber. Motion received.
Thank you. So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Amber, do we have to, on B, do we have to receive those applications today?
You did not move to.
No, we didn't.
So I would receive them.
Okay, so I need a motion to receive the applications for Bay Area.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's see. C, Region 7 Area Agency on Aging the Appointment to the Board of Directors, need a motion to receive.
So moved.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, the application for appointment to Region 7 Area Agency on Aging to the Board of Directors.
So moved.
Support.
And to appoint Patrick Beeson.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, Radke in the Ways and Means Committee.
All right. Resolution number 2022-55, the renewal of Clear Services contract. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Next up, resolution number 2022-56, the appropriation for Shield for software. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-57, the 2023 Community Corrections Grant Funding. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-58, the Open Gym and Fitness Membership Fee. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Number 2022-59, the removal of fiber optic pole attachments. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-60, fairgrounds improvements, along with the grant applications. I move this resolution.
Support. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-61, the Emergency Management ARPA Grant Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And finally, resolution number 2022-62 with payables. I move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, nothing from Mr. Johnson today.
Nothing today.
Next week. From the Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Begic.
Resolution 2022-63, the reports of the county executive. I would move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Resolution number 2022-64, the March 2022 is procurement month in Bay County. I'd move that resolution.
Support.
Discussion. This is for Francis.
Yes.
We bow to you because we know how hard your job is. You do a great job. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And we have one more. Resolution number 2022-65, the appointment of Ryan Gale to the Central Dispatch Director.
Support.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Begic. Next, the reports of county executive.
You know, I don't have a lot on this chair, but I just want to thank the board for their concurrence in the appointment of Ryan Gale and say that he's a tremendous asset to the county and to all of the folks, first responders who rely on the, you know, the disaster assistance or emergency communications that are so well carried to all the first responders throughout Bay County. Ryan had a strong experience in leadership with the Central Dispatch since 2016. Also serves as a captain in the United States Army National Guard, brings basically a wealth of experience with him. He's very well respected by all of the staff at Central Dispatch, and I want to thank you for approving Ryan Gale. He's hit the ground running and doing a great job, so.
Ryan, do you want to say anything? Or, you know, you can come up and, you know, everybody can see who you are, so when, you know, like when they got all these kudos they want to give you when they're about how great 911 is working, you know?
Yes, sir, yeah. Well, you know, first, I want to say I'm definitely honored and humbled to serve in that capacity, you know, not only on behalf of the folks at 911 and, you know, the responders of Bay County, for the citizens of Bay County. So, you know, my dedication and commitment is definitely steadfast, and I look forward to every opportunity to prove my worth here.
I know you're following a hard fellow there. I know he was hard on you, but.
He's, I've definitely been reaching out to him, you know, as a transition.
He knows a couple of tricks, I think, so.
Yeah.
But, you know, but, yeah, I think we, I think we, I think we got our second win in a row, so, you know, I'm very happy for you. Congratulations. Is there any unfinished business? New business? There is new business. It's an amendment to the board rules to change the dates of the meetings. The first.
So moved.
Support.
So we need to do a reading. Madam Clerk?
Amendment of board rules to change board meeting dates, recommending that regular board meetings be held the third Tuesday of the month. Ways and Means Committee will meet the first Tuesday. Personnel and Human Services Committee will meet the second Tuesday. Requesting that this amended language be read in open session to the full board, with the amendment being open for discussion and receipt. to be discussed and voted upon at the next regularly scheduled full board meeting, currently scheduled for the second Tuesday in April 2022, April 12, 2022. With said amendment taking effect beginning May 2022.
Where we have.
The actual language that is being proposed pursuant to this resolution shall change the first sentence of Article 1, Section 1 of the Bay County Board of Commissioner rules to be amended to read as follows. Regular meetings of the Board of Commissioners shall be held on the third Tuesday of each month except four months in which meetings are required by statute.
Thank you. Where we have a motion to receive. Commissioner.
If we're into questions.
We, I have a question first. Let me ask this, Amber, do we discuss this now or next time? I said, I read the thing, it said discuss it next. Should we discuss it now or what?
This is the motion to receive. You can discuss it now and you can discuss it then.
Okay. That's all I want to know. Commissioner Krieger.
So the question I have is with the seven personnel, the second Tuesday. You know, things are very fluid with employees in primary positions that may open. Will we then take, from the time we have personnel to the full board, address new positions that need to be filled? Or are we going to make them wait till the following month?
I think the hope is that we can address some the next week after they bring, that's the hope.
But if for some reason we do have an issue, my question is, will we address it at the full board or will we make them wait till the following month?
I guess that's why we discuss.
All right.
Tiffany, you have any other, you want, go ahead.
I would, I'm making the assumption that the purpose of this is so that, right now, the Personnel and Human Services is the third Tuesday, so they actually wait several weeks until the following month for a full board. I'm assuming that this would create the process so that they're only waiting that one week for the full board approval, not to go through to the following month.
All right.
We've already, we've already addressed that language earlier on in the year in regards to those positions that may come open after you intended to fill something. So I think in just about every situation, when we have our list of openings that come from you, the language that's about on each one of those resolutions is that if, for instance, a position opens up in this spot that is vacated in order to fill another spot, then that can automatically be, try to fill that spot.
That's correct. There is some language on each resolution now that allows backfilling if the vacancy is created in the same department. So if in the Health Department, somebody moves up and creates an additional vacancy, there's language to allow that person to post backfilling.
Which wouldn't fix potentially all the problems that may come, that may come up in, I think, in regards to situations like we've had. But at least that would help address those situations where it's people moving within their same area. But, I mean, not that I have a problem with having to do special meetings every single time we have the personnel meeting. I don't have a problem with that. But it seems like it would make more sense if we did it this way. So you've got your.
Oh, I agree.
Your people and then go ahead and do a vote on both. And then, and then hope that for the next two weeks, it'd be more than that, it'd be free. But I guess what we can.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, we'll move on to miscellaneous, any miscellaneous?
Do we have to vote?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think you actually voted to receive after discussion.
What do we have to do?
You need to vote to receive.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forget stuff, I'm so. I know. We already made the motion, I think we second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. So next miscellaneous, any miscellaneous? No miscellaneous. Announcements, we got appointments in March, which is still this month, of Bay Area Behavioral Health. And June, Library Board. October, Land Bank Authority. And Department of Health and Human Services Board of Directors. And in December, Veteran and Fairness Committee. And again, in December, Department on Aging Advisory Committee. Is there any need for closed session? Vaughn, you didn't have any announcements?
No.
Wow. Is there any need for closed session then?
There is none, Mr. Trump.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn will be in order.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.